Okay, we good?
I think so.
All right, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and we'll start with standing and saying the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Not awkward at all. All right, so we go to 1.02 approval of agenda.
I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Any comments or questions about the agenda? Seeing none, we're ready for a vote.
Just confirming, Kim Marie, that was you on second?
Yes.
Thank you. AJ?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
David? David, you're still muted?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Machine carries.
Brings us to our consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. We have a motion on the consent agenda.
I move the board approve consent agenda items 2.01 through 2.06.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion or questions on the consent agenda? If not, then we're ready for a vote.
AJ? AJ, I'm sorry, thank you.
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Machine carries.
All right, that brings us to 3.01, the cabinet report, Dr. Tucker.
Yeah, so good to see everybody in the comfort of your homes. I hope you can hear us, albeit my screen is muted, we're using the microphone here in the exec conference room. So appreciate everyone joining in this evening. Who would have thought that just a few weeks ago and we met earlier that we would be in a situation that we're in in terms of transitioning to school at home or leveraging our online learning experience. But nonetheless, that is where we're at. So one of the things we wanted to do for this evening is to do two things, to try to create some sense of normalcy for the work of our Board of Education and our monthly meeting, but at the same time streamline our agenda, given the current state that we are in and navigating school closures and flexible learning days in terms of not necessarily doing business as usual. One thing that I did want to mention, as we've shifted to a lot of different Zoom meetings and filled our calendars on a daily basis now with Zoom meeting after Zoom meeting, what we started doing is really celebrating and finding the good, so to speak, in our community and our daily life as we transitioned to maybe a new normal for a little while. And as we've done that the last day and again today, one of the things that was mentioned repeatedly was the expression of gratitude to the board for your message that you all sent out earlier this week as we were embarking on new territory and transition to flex learning. So on behalf of our support staff, our certified staff and everyone in between, thank you for taking the time to send that heartfelt message, a very great encouraging note, but then also challenging people to put things at ease, but at the same time take risks, experiment, have fun and create engaging opportunities. So that was very well received. As you'll recall, we met as a board on Friday, March 13th, and for a special meeting to discuss what we were seeing across the nation as well as our state and the potential of school closures. This was just prior to starting spring break and it quickly elevated from there as we looked to extend spring break through April 6th, but then also look to extend that with the Kansas City mayor's order through April 24th. Had a little bit of a reprieve while we were on our spring break to finalize our plans, but feel very fortunate that we were able to leverage our flex learning model that the board approved to be put in place during the inclement weather season as far as our winter and that that gave us a launch point for where we're at now. Knowing that that'll evolve, we will have multiple iterations of that. It's changing literally day by day as we're including new resources and assessing what's working well, what's not working well. So just know that that's incredibly fluid as we go from day to day this week and trying to implement that model. In addition to that evolution, something we've noted is we went ahead and submitted our alternative method of instruction plan to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We did that last week and got a pretty quick reply from them that that AMI application was approved, but not only was it approved, they wanted to know if they could leverage our resources and our plan as an exemplar for other districts. And so we said absolutely, we'd be willing to share and collaborate and provide those resources. So we've talked all along about being positioned for purpose. And so right now we're able to share what we're learning, what we're experimenting with, with other districts across the state of Missouri, as well as others that we've heard of nationally that are looking to Liberty to try to see what we're putting in place. So we're doing a lot of collaboration, learning from other districts, but then also sharing with other districts as we walk through this together. In addition to that, as we've kind of navigated the last, say, 10 days, we've identified really three key areas or big areas that I would say have bubbled to the surface. There are a lot of smaller details and a lot of questions, a lot of logistics that we've had to navigate. But those three areas are really academic services and that transitions to school at home. The second category is in the operations area as far as ensuring that our students and our families have access through nutrition services to breakfast and lunch and how we can put those structures in place. And then lastly, the care and concern that we have for nearly 2,000 employees during this time of high anxiety. Again, that's a very narrow scope in terms of the complexities of what we're navigating. But again, those are probably the three big areas that we would say have bubbled up to the surface. Tied to that very closely are the budget and financial issues as a result of everything we're navigating, both at the local level, but then also on a grander scale and long-term implications. But then also the value in our messaging and communication to be able to put people's minds at ease, to put a plan in place and communicate that plan, but then also be able to provide answers to questions as they come up. So one of the things we thought we would do with our joint cabinet report this evening is just give an opportunity for our cabinet areas to be able to share out some of the key things that they are working on or have navigated over the last few days. So we're going to start with academic services. Appreciate our executive directors for joining us this evening. And we're going to turn it over to Dr. Westfall to kind of give an overview of academic services. And then Dr. Dixon Sehorn and Dr. Moore can add on as well. So Dr. Westfall?
Thank you. I want to first echo what Dr. Tucker said on behalf of academic services. And I'm, thank you for letting us speak with you about this, but we want to echo his sentiments about the wonderful email. It just started the whole week off in the right way. But we have a couple of highlights that we wanted to share with you. As you can imagine, our first two days have been filled with the opportunity to try to connect with every single student that we have. So that is a goal for us of 100% connection. And we have a variety of ways that we were able to share on the principals' meetings today. Dr. Sehorn and Dr. Moore have been having continuous contact with their building leaders, making sure that that is our first priority is to take care of our kids and make sure that we know where they are and how they're doing and what their needs are. In addition, we set a time pretty regularly to meet with our academic services directors and making sure that not only are they taken care of and the areas that they cover are feeling supported, but that the troubleshooting that we have to do on that end from anywhere from working with special programs like ELL populations or our IEP students, making sure that all the things that they need are in place so that they can reach their kids and that their teachers and consultants have an ability to do that, all the way down to connecting, for example, with our resources. Our technology department, as you can imagine, has been spectacular. Our library media specialists are offering professional learning. Our coaches are standing side by side with teachers. And so we feel pretty, we're pretty emotional about our people right now, feeling pretty proud about them. And then, you know, we're calm, we got it, we're in the stage of planning because this week is rolling and we feel like we have a pretty good start. And so now we're looking to next week and what does that look like as things start to get real and people start to be in their houses for a little longer than this couple of days? So we're on that, we want you to know that we want that calmness and that caring to be the most prevalent feeling that we have in academic services. And so thanks again for all your support and for leading off with that message.
And then would open it up to Dr. Dixon Sehorn and Dr. Moore as far as anything to add to Dr. Westfall's report.
Julie, would you like me to go first? Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, wonderful. Julie, would you like me to go first?
You can go ahead and go, I don't have anything to add from what Jeanette said, so I'm good.
Absolutely, and I really don't have anything more to add other than we are just so thankful for the board's just support and belief in us to carry the torch during these turbulent times. And we're also very thankful that at the elementary level in particular, that we've had an awesome team develop what we call the student choice boards, which is really a second iteration from what we implemented for the initial flexible learning day when we had inclement weather. And so we've been able to expand and expound upon that and use that as a launching pad for these first two weeks of teaching and learning in a virtual space. And so we are just very grateful for our principals just having the courage to forge full steam ahead during these uncertain times. So thank you again for your support.
Again, thank you to academic services. There are a whole lot of issues and detail that we're not going to include in our update this evening, but we'll certainly open it up for a board member questions as we wrap up our cabinet report. Mr. Anderson, you want to share from your perspective in terms of operations, the areas that you're focusing on and working through?
Sure. You know, we've been spending a lot of time as a team really focused on that meal service piece and the coordination of that and setting that up. Really been pleased and proud of that team stepping up and coordinating that. First day was a couple hiccups, but nothing that was too major. Made some adjustments on day two and really today went quite smoothly. First day, probably that 450 meals served today was a little less than that because we didn't deliver today. And so we'll continue to kind of grow and adjust that as we go. Apart from that, the rest of the operations team, everybody's kind of involved in various different capacities in support, realizing that we'll probably have to scale up a little bit as we kind of know what that longer term plan is. And so they're all thinking through that and how we might best deploy some of those teams. And then beyond that, spending quite a bit of time with our construction team, project team, kind of brainstorming through how best to navigate some of this uncertain terrain ahead of us. We'll probably have a more definitive plan next week in terms of how that all might take shape looking forward. Probably the one of most interest is the PAC project at Liberty High School. Right now, we're still in that building and working and that's universal is taking direction from the county, the city, Kansas City Mo, and a lot of projects are still in progress. And so it continues, but I think the consensus is that that will likely slow down and that would affect the open date in August, and so more to come on that one. The other thing that our group has really been spending some time on and working across all the various departments is really kind of this look ahead first with respect to construction and capital planning, all the various projects that are in queue right now and knowing the costs involved and the timing and putting out to bid and trying to get a really good sense of when we need to start making some major decisions on which projects move forward and those that don't. And so within that area, I think we're pretty confident that we can really scale back many of those projects and really try to reduce that overall hole off of the capital budget all total. It's about $5 million that we program in annually. And so I would imagine, well, at least have the opportunity to shrink that considerably as we look forward into next year without really significant sacrifices. We'll hit a couple major roof projects that we simply have to address and there's a one HVAC project. But we're working through the details there. In addition, Jason Bright is working closely with Denise Aldrich and they're working through, they'll be in touch with academics here shortly. But kind of a long range plan to look ahead in terms of all the various non-construction related proposals and bids and agreements that are in the hopper and the various costs associated with all of those. So we can get some decent visibility to all those commitments or potential commitments to put us in a better position if we do need to start kind of pulling back in some of those areas. And so we're spending quite a bit of time kind of in that look ahead already, which I think is where we need to be. And then the last piece, Julie, I owe Julia a call here. We're working through kind of on the calendaring piece as well. There's a lot of things from summer school, the graduation to kids' own enrollment. There's a lot of things that are not necessarily tied to contracts and agreements or construction. And we're putting the same type of plan together that will really help us kind of see when we need to start making those decisions and when we might simply have to pull the plug if the unknowns are too murky at that point. But been a little crazy week. The only other thing I would say is, you know, crisis kind of reveals who you are as an individual and who you are as an organization. And I too couldn't be more proud of the board, kind of all trickles down, right? The board, Dr. Tucker, it just makes a difference when there's that just measured calm in the midst of all this unknown and crazy and it really makes a big difference. So just appreciate everybody.
We did not ask him to say that, by the way. So thank you, Mr. Anderson, I appreciate that, that's heartfelt, I know.
Yeah.
Dr. Vogelar, from a human resource perspective?
Yes, thank you. And obviously I want to echo all of the sentiments, you know, as somebody who is very intimate with the details of your human capital, your human resources, you have a heart for people, you want to take good care of people. And so it really is very exciting to be a part of an organization that shares that globally. Just like Mr. Anderson talked about that really trickling down from the top. We are and have been and continue to be an organization devoted to taking care of people, whether those people are little people, students, families or our own employees. And so I do appreciate that. The HR department obviously is working with a lot of curveballs right now. We have a lot of changes, rapid changes in the law. The recently passed Families First Coronavirus Response Act has come with a lot of new expectations. And so we're unpacking that as an HR department. What does that mean for our folks who are already on leaves? FMLA leaves, maternity leaves, and those who may need to start experiencing that even during this window of time when we have remote work options. So the department is working very closely with a lot of different agencies and our partner school districts around the greater Kansas City area to really unpack the implications of that, of that Family First Coronavirus Response Act. Additional changes or modifications that are just a natural byproduct of going remote rapidly is we're still in the season of doing teacher evaluations. Our probationary teacher evaluations have wrapped up, but we have our tenured permanent teachers' evaluations that are still in play and that involves some classroom observations that are increasingly difficult to pull off. So we're looking at kind of breathing some relief in that while still maintaining our compliance with state expectations regarding the teacher evaluations. I talk about wanting to take care of people. We've got a lot of student teachers in our district, about 30 right now, who are coming from colleges and universities around the area wanting to learn the craft, the art and science, being a teacher in our school system. And now they're all thrown into a virtual learning environment. So part of that is working closely with DESI and those partner universities to make sure that these students stay on course with matriculating all the expectations of student teaching so they graduate. The nice thing is, is our Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has issued some guidance that they're pulling back as well, being flexible with regard to this uncertain time. And as a result, it allowed us to give some, get some clarity from these colleges and universities and give some assurance to these student teachers who are wondering what's going to happen in May when they hope to commence and become teachers. And we'll be petitioning DESI for their own teacher certificate. So we're diligently at work at working through the red tape involved in that. But right now, all the signs are very positive that our student teachers are going to get to count what they're doing in partnership with their cooperating teachers in that virtual environment for their matriculation to graduation. We do have some situations where some employees, as I mentioned earlier, on maternity leaves or FMLA leaves that are not allowing them to come into work. And so we have long-term subs in those positions, but in this virtual environment, many of them have indicated an interest in taking the lead and in teaching those classes and they're able to do it from home. So working through, making sure we've got the medical releases to do that and then freeing up the long-term subs in those situations that won't be needed, just ensuring that we aren't, you know, having two people doing the same, the same work for the same classrooms is also part of just dealing with some of these curveballs. Kelly Services has been an excellent partner with us in that process of navigating those those long-term subs situations where we've not needed maternity leave coverage, for example, because a teacher is able to do that from home. So those are really kind of the hotspots that have emerged very rapidly in our world as a result of this. And we're navigating them very effectively.
Okay, thank you, Bob, I appreciate that. Next up then, from business services perspective, Ms. Cindy Sullivan, anything to add?
Thank you, yeah. I too wanted to express my appreciation for every single one of you on here and the support that we have felt moving forward in the new reality of what we're facing. The business office, we spent the last week and a half figuring out what exactly the essential functions that we need to perform to keep the district up and running financially. And that includes getting the staff that can work from home remotely set up so that we can pay payroll and pay bills. They have done a fabulous job rising to the occasion and we are making sure that we are connecting with them and keeping care of them as well since they are now kind of isolated and to themselves. But we're meeting with them regularly and touching base to make sure that they're doing okay. We have it situated that payroll will be all done remotely from the two payroll coordinators' homes. And we've divided up the work so that all staff will continue to get paid. And I know that everyone has been very appreciative of that. Accounts payable, we've been working very closely with purchasing and all building and department administrators and administrative assistants to figure out how to get invoices to the right place electronically and signed off and approved for payment. And this week that has seemed to work very well. I'm sure we'll have some hiccups along the way, but everything seems to be going very smoothly so far, just two days in. But I'm sure we'll have more report on that as we go down the road here in a couple of weeks. We're also monitoring the revenue situation with the state and the federal government. It really is a little bit early right now to know what the full impact is going to be of the economic downturn. And that includes the extension of the tax filing deadlines and the loss of sales tax revenue for the state. We are also anticipating some kind of federal stimulus and as soon as we know what and how much that is, that will hopefully clear up that picture a little more to know where we're heading. I've been in contact with some of my peers and Joe Kinder from Stiefel Nicholas, just to see what their thoughts are. And quite honestly, I got three different opinions on where that's going to go. So again, more to come on that, but we will keep you informed as we know information about that. We are looking, you know, how did best to make the budget happen this year? It will be a little different, quite honestly, just because of the unknowns for the next couple of years because of the factors that will affect this year and the next two years with all of the differing scenarios that could happen. So again, I appreciate you all and as things are told to us, we will pass them on to you and I think we'll get this done this year.
Thank you, Cindy. And she mentioned kind of the short-term, midterm, long-term implications of everything we're navigating and kind of thinking through what that could look like. And so one of the conversations we're having that is an ongoing one and will continue will be some of the decisions that we make now have implications for FY '21, if not FY '22 and beyond, as we kind of watch and see what revenue projections look like and engage what the overall economic climate looks like as we come out of this coronavirus situation. Your guess as to when is as good as anyone's, but again, we'll continue to provide information to you as we learn more along the way. So appreciate Cindy staying close to her peers, but then also the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the Missouri Association of School Business Officials and the Missouri Association of School Administrators, where we typically get some of our best information. That's at the state level, but then certainly leaning on our local entities as it relates to assess valuation as the months progress. We get a better picture of what that's going to look like moving forward. Mr. Ackerman is joining us online, so he is viewing tonight from the comfort of his basement. But I could not express enough appreciation for Dallas and his efforts on the communication front, whether it's including a lot of the information to roll out flexible learning days and transition to school at home on our website. If you've not been to our website, there are a couple of key pieces that you need to be mindful of. As soon as you pull that webpage up, it shows a COVID-19 link that then takes you to another page that has a variety of tabs from how to access the nutrition services, breakfast and lunch meal program to the flexible learning resources and additional academic resources, health services information. We also have a feature on our webpage that is dedicated to families seeking out resources or assistance, but then on the same end, those that are willing to provide assistance. And so Jessica Meisenheimer is spearheading that effort and really coordinating with a variety of our community partners, Pleasant Valley Baptist Church, Feed Northland Kids and others that are willing to volunteer their time. And so you'll be seeing more as far as community outreach efforts to be able to provide the needs of families that need that additional assistance. I'll take that a step further as it relates to agencies that we are talking with and communicating with. We work with a variety of agencies from groups like Clay County Health Department. And you all have been involved in our community partners meetings where Liberty Public Schools comes together with William Joel College, with Liberty Hospital, with the City of Liberty, coordinating closely with the City of Kansas City, as well as working with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, as well as being asked to assist in being part of the Governor's Education Advisory Committee. So we're pulled a lot of different ways, but we lean heavily on these departments and these agencies to be able to assist us in navigating where we're at today. One item that we're working on with communications and technology is a portal that we want to place on our website. That's a communications portal we've been looking at for some time and it's called Let's Talk. And what that allows families or community members or staff, students to be able to do is to insert their question. And by topic, it is funneled out to our appropriate contact person. And so we're working with an education partner be able to put that on our website in hopes of having that up and running by the latter part of this week to streamline some of that communication. It allows us to identify themes and concerns of questions that are being posed, but at the same time gives us an opportunity to look at the analytics and how quickly we are responding to people's inquiries or people's questions. We just think that's one added tool that we will be able to utilize over the course of the next couple of months. So we're piloting that program. There's no expense, there's no fee tied to that. And so we appreciate them extending that service to us during this time of transition. In terms of wrapping up my comments, looking ahead, a lot of questions that we've been asked as far as, you know, will the closure be extended through the end of the school year? When might the last day of school be? When is prom going to be held? Are we going to have a commencement exercise? What about end of year activities? What about summer school? So as we track those questions, really trying to develop a series of FAQ trap those questions, really trying to develop a series of FAQs, a lot of those questions are geared towards secondary or high school students. A lot of them are geared towards seniors, quite honestly. Trap those questions, give a response, knowing that some of those decisions have yet to be made, but then taking those FAQs and pushing them out to our students, to our staff, to our parents, families, with the understanding that as things evolve, we'll certainly solidify some of those decisions, knowing full well that we want to celebrate our senior class of 2020. It may not be on the exact date of prom or the exact date of our commencement exercises, but we certainly don't want the opportunity to celebrate them as a community, just knowing that that might come at a later date. So stay tuned as it relates to some of those end-of-year activities and those FAQs. With that said, the last thing I would say is I appreciate you funneling your questions that you're hearing in the community, or perhaps questions that you have to us, to help populate that frequently asked questions list. We will continue to provide you daily updates as we've been doing the last 10 days. I hope those are beneficial, keeping you informed, and certainly want to be accessible to you all for any questions, ideas, suggestions that you might have. I know that was a longer-than-normal administrative report or cabinet update, but I appreciate all of those that have reported this evening, as well as many that are not on the screen, that are meeting regularly to problem solve and navigate these issues. It's interesting in that you might think you've got a plan, one hour, and then an hour later, that plan is completely disrupted because of something that's come up. But that's the, the era in which we live. We've had to get used to that pretty quickly. So I'll step back and open it up for any questions that the board may have of our cabinet, of our administrators this evening.
I have a question for Steve. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Is it AJ? Can you hear?
I can, AJ. You're on mute now.
Muted.
You're muted, AJ.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I heard you say we delivered 450 meals on yesterday, is that correct?
So we served 450 plus yesterday. We served about four and a quarter today. We're only delivering on Monday and Wednesday, but all days, Monday through Friday, we're open at Ridgeview and Liberty Oaks for drive-through pickup.
Families can pick up also?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thanks. Glad to hear that.
I might add also, Trey Cottser is here with us tonight. In the event we need help with troubleshooting our technology, but earlier this afternoon, he and I were talking, and it just dawned on me to ask him how many hotspots or what the need for accessibility to internet has been over the course of the last couple of days. I believe we've distributed 20 hotspots, and we have an additional five on the way to support five additional families. So we're able to respond to those needs as they're identified within our student population. I'd add, if you all hear that as a concern or as a question, whether it's among our students or our staff, and them being able to access Wi-Fi from home, we're here to help and can hopefully problem solve that for them. So thank you to Trey and his team in being incredibly responsive.
Hey, Dr. Vogelar, just a quick question. You brought up substitutes, something I never even thought of in the midst of all this, right? And I understand the long-term piece of that. Is there just, as we move forward in this kind of new world, is there just not a need necessarily for short-term substitutes?
Well, there, there are in some cases. If folks are out on a leave where they're not getting medical release to come back to work, even in a remote capacity, those subs are still needed in those environments. When we have some staff who understandably, they're, they're at home for maternity leave, they feel they can pick up the full load of the remote learning and, and want to do that. We're being accommodating. And in those situations, Kelly Services is working to pull that, that sub out and reallocate them elsewhere in their system in similar, you know, situations or needs.
Okay. Good.
Any other questions for Dr. Tucker or any other members of the cabinet? Well, certainly like to express our appreciation for all of you and the leadership that you've shown, and the extra work that you've had to put in the last 10 days. And certainly thing that things are, have gone as smoothly as you can possibly expect in the uncharted territory. So appreciate it and appreciate all the quick responses when we have had to reach out with some questions.
You bet. Thank you.
All right. Then we will move on to our unfinished business, which is 4.01, Board Policy Revisions. It appears that there are five for approval. Is that right?
Yeah, you thought you'd get away from that, but talk about normalcy. We do have a few for your consideration this evening. As you'll recall, you had an opportunity to take a look at those earlier, so those are just presented to you this evening for your consideration.
And I, I'll go ahead and make the motion, then we can discuss if you want. But I move the board to approve policies IIA, IIAC, IIAC-R, KH, and KLB.
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion on the motion or any questions about any of the policies?
I just have a quick comment. I was really excited to see the inclusion of some of our language around diversity, diversity and inclusion in the instructional materials. Thank you for that work.
Anyone else?
Yes, I got a question. It was related to removing something about the content. Is there a reason why we decided to remove that content at this point in time under IIC? I think it's ID, 1D. Right before we talked about diversity, there was, the conversation was consideration being given to textbook-containing content areas that provide for each child to realize their potential. Was there a reason for that removal?
Can Academic Services speak to that question, Dr. Westphal?
Sure. Mr. Bird, we were just looking at the information. A lot of times we get, because things are printed, sometimes they're just not accurate. And when we find that, or it's brought to our attention, then we do our very best to verify. And then as a consideration to all of the people that have put, put it forth, then we look to make sure that it's the right information. So it's not anything specific to a person, like what we try not to do is put it up for subjectivity.
Good. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions, comments? I think we're ready for a vote then.
AJ?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Machine Carries?
All right. That concludes our unfinished business. We move to new business, 5.01 Resolution in Response to Health Emergency. Dr. Tucker?
When we met back on, I believe it was March 13th, for our special board meeting prior to spring break, we reviewed three board policies specifically as it relates to the authorities of the superintendent and administration during an emergency period, and felt there was significant amount of leeway provided to district administration to be able to perform the functions necessary during a period of emergency. Shortly thereafter, we received a sample resolution from the Missouri School Boards Association as it relates to resolution in response to health emergency. And so we wanted to bring that to you this evening for your consideration. And I think this provides an additional layer to the already existing board policies and provisions that are provided to district administration in working closely with the board during a period of emergency. The elements that are contained within that resolution include meeting as necessary, and it can even include video conferencing or virtual meetings, teleconferences, as we're doing this evening and we've done before. It asks for support of the superintendent, which I appreciate every, everything that you all do in support of the district and administration, knowing that we likely would not have extended periods for lengthy deliberation like we typically would, and that sometimes those periods are on the fly or much shorter necessitating action. It also gives some guidance as it relates to governance practices and communication in funneling questions concerned through to the superintendent and central office, as well as speaking in a unified voice, leveraging myself or Mr. Ackerman as Communications Director to communicate on behalf of the district and the board, the president of the Board of Education as well, including that person's role in communicating out. And then the last two areas it speaks to is navigating board policy. In the event there is an action or a decision that needs to be made that is outside or against board policy, so long as it's legal, ethical, moral, and so forth. And then communicating what those decisions are and actions with the board on a regular basis as quickly as able. And then lastly, it just gives some guidance as it relates to patience during a time of crisis or during a period of emergency. So having reviewed that resolution, hope you've had an opportunity to take a look at it through your Board Docs portal. We just present that to you this evening for your consideration.
I move the board to adopt the Resolution in Response to Health Emergency.
Second.
Discussion or questions on this? Just to be clear, we're not suspending anything. We're just...
That's correct. And so...
Beating some requirements.
Exactly. Anything that would be identified within policy particularly, that we feel we need to act different than what policy dictates, we would certainly bring before you. To give you one example, we've been navigating exempt versus non-exempt staff, and the differences of, of certain personnel being able to work remotely from home, and others not being able to work remotely from home. And albeit the Fair Labor Standards Act permits some of that, our board policy is a little bit more restrictive. And so in the next couple of weeks, as we start identifying what those roles and responsibilities are for all of our employees, we will likely have classified staff working remotely from home, that we will then need to look at that policy and see if there's some language change that we need to make for a temporary basis, or maybe even long-term, that more closely aligns to the FLSA standards. Anything to add to that piece, Bob? Okay. That's just an example that we've identified so far. Scott?
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? If there's not, then I think we're ready for a vote on this.
AJ? And you're muted.
Yes.
Thank you. Scott?
Yes.
David? Angie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Machine Carries?
Takes us to 5.02. This is the 2020-2021 Compensation Plan. This is basically, I think, kind of a first read of this, so it's not for action, but for more informative purposes tonight, correct?
That is correct. And you have kind of the highlights in terms of the recommendation and anticipated costs. Want to thank Team Liberty for all of the work that they did around this prior to spring break, as well as Dr. Vogelar and Cindy Sullivan from Business Services. Cindy starts that process by looking over the anticipated revenues and projections, albeit a little early, since we don't have great information from the state. But you can see, based on those deliberations and discussion, that the recommendation at this point was to honor vertical steps and horizontal step movement, that then takes that to an estimated cost of $1.4 million, a little bit over that. Looking at the implementation of Phase Two, or CBIS, salary study and recommendation to the tune of about $280,000, a minor cost tied to holding harmless of those employees that were impacted by some adjustments made on a one-time and $1,500 enhancement to some changes in the schedule from fiscal year 19 to a total estimated cost, if implemented, of $1.7 million, $34,965 in total. With all that said, Team Liberty will be meeting on April 10. And we know that our climate has changed pretty quickly, just a matter of a couple of weeks. And so as Cindy and her team are working on getting additional information from the state as it relates to the impact of the, the freeze or the pause across the country on state revenues, income tax, sales tax, local assessed valuation, they'll be relaying some of that information on April 10, allow Team Liberty to process the different climate we're in today than they were the last time they met, and then bring that recommendation either in its current form, or perhaps a modified form, given our current climate, at our April board meeting. In the event that we don't have a clearer picture by our April board meeting, we may push that deeper into May. Quite honestly, we don't want to rush too quickly. We want to make decisions based on the best information that we have. So we'll be visiting pretty closely with Team Liberty on that front. Anything to add, Dr. Vogelar or Cindy, as it relates to this initial read, the SAF salary recommendations for 2020, 2021?
No, just an assurance, when Team Liberty meets on, on the 10th of April, it will be via Zoom as well. We won't be bringing all of them together face-to-face. But the collaboration has been by far, I think, the, the best collaboration that, that I've had in my tenure in, in this role. Cindy's great work is, is, I think, key to that. She's built a very good relationship with the, all the members of Team Liberty and EdSA. It's a very transparent process and a very, I think, a very others-centered and outward-focused approach by everybody, certainly to be commended.
Thank you, Dr. Vogelar. I, I don't know exactly what to expect to be able to present to them, but like Bob said, it's been such a collaborative relationship that I think whatever we present to them, they will look at from a district-centered process, and that we'll be able to come to some resolution, whether we move on with this, or perhaps not do the implementation of the second phase. But we'll give them all of that information that we have and go from there.
I think that's it on that item.
All right. Anyone have any questions tonight? I'm sure we'll dig in deeper over the next month, and then take action either in a month or in, in May. But I want to make sure if there's any questions tonight, anybody has a chance to ask them.
We still, this will come up later in the meeting, but do we still have a work session scheduled the first part of May, or first part of April, I assume?
As of now, we do, yes.
But we can do some more detail on that as well.
Correct.
Thank you.
I, I appreciate the fact that you all are looking at the environment and saying, we can't just be business as usual. We need to be thoughtful about where we are and what may come in the months ahead. You know, I, I think the challenging environment forces us to think about things in that way. At this, at the same time, my bias is our work is, you know, what these people are doing is going to be hard. And so we need to figure out how to, how to take care of the, the people that are, you know, the, the world just turned upside down. And how do we make sure we're supporting them in, in all ways, not just the pay schedule over the coming, coming weeks and months? So...
And that, that's something we've, we've definitely tried to communicate with people, and it's, you know, we're not by any means screaming, "The sky is falling," but at the same time, we're looking to the sky to see what's going on. And so that's something that, you know, if people lived through the 2008, 2009 downturn, and, and, you know, kind of experienced that, a lot of districts were walking through, you know, smaller or depleted fund balances, looking at prioritizing budget reductions. So those are the things that we want to be mindful of and making good decisions. The other thing we've communicated at the same time on that end is a lot of sectors are impacted differently. And so one of the things we saw back in 2008, 2009 is that school districts were certainly not insulated, but they were buffered in a lot of ways, and positioned a little bit better than a lot of other sectors that we saw that were impacted by the economy then. So my perspective is that public education is a phenomenal purpose and, and kind of a pursuit. The same time, there is a little bit of insulation, albeit most districts will be impacted in some way as we think about the next couple of fiscal years.
All right. Any other questions for Dr. Tucker?
Yeah, I, you know, I know we've got a lot of things on a calendar, per se. Is the salary schedule, is that calendarized as well? Or can we revisit this at another point in time in the future, once we have some funding shored up?
That's where we, the one thing we have to be able to do by the end of June, this has not been waived by any means by DESI or the state, is to approve a budget. In terms of our schedule between now and June, that's where we have more flexibility. The other thing that we do want to try to get into... The other thing that we do want to try to get into, of course, you know, we still have contracts that are issued. We have addendums to contracts that end up being issued once we land on those salary schedules and amounts. So there are some pieces to be done between now and that final budget approval. Knowing that this is not a normal year, we would likely look at having additional flexibility along those lines. Anything to add, Dr. Vogelar or Cindy?
No, just that, you know, contracts will go out after this vote for reemployment. There's an April 15th obligation to do that. We'll meet that obligation irrespective of a final decision on salaries. So it'll be addendums that come after that. And there is certainly flexibility. It's tied to the budget. And so typically, that's been an April or May rollout. But there's nothing that says it can't be a June rollout or even rolled out with some stipulations, you know, pending changes in funding outlook or something that you can modify something later. We do have a policy, and there is state law to this effect, that after people enter into a contract, you can't change the dollar amount of that contract unless you're changing the work. And so we just have to be mindful of that as we move forward. And certainly, we'll have legal guidance along the way if there is a desire on the board to part and parcel some of these things out.
As far as the budget goes, we certainly can take that all the way into June, knowing full well that in September, we amend it for things that happened that we didn't count on anyway. So we should be in good shape, however that budget ends up rolling out for salaries.
So does the, are contracts still have to be issued by the same date and time as they have been in the past, the 15th or whatever the date is?
That is my understanding, that that provision is still in place and there is no waiver to do anything differently. Knowing that, again, it's not truly the completed contract because those salary decisions haven't yet been made. It's really just the intent to reemploy for the next year.
Right.
All right, we're good on that one for tonight? Okay, then we will move to 5.03 Insurance Brokerage Services.
This item is presented to you this evening for first read. And as we do periodically in alignment with statute and board policies in terms of taking some of our brokers and kind of key providers out to bid periodically, we've done that with insurance broker services. This is on the health and welfare side. Earlier in March, when we held our study session, you heard from our broker on the property casual side, not to get the two confused. But this is presented to you this evening for first read. You'll have time to be able to look at that before we bring it back to you for a final recommendation in April. But wanted to turn it over to Dr. Vogelar to share any additional information on it.
Thank you very much. And really, I'd like to start out just by thanking Jason Bright. He leads the process for purchasing and distribution and plays a vital role in this as well. And Cindy was on this team, so feel free, Cindy, to chime in if you want to. I, we as a team felt very privileged that we had the level of response that we did to this RFP. It was a very difficult decision, one that required a lot of deliberation, a lot more than what was typical. The recommendation that we bring to you is really born out of that required compensation line on the attached. Holmes Murphy is very competitive. There are incumbent. And then any monies in the form of blue chip commission ends up coming back to us in ancillary services, which is of significant importance to the organization as well. Because of that lower price point for Holmes Murphy on the required compensation, it does mean that there's more money available for those ancillary services than over and above the blue chip commissions. That, along with other quality factors, the fact that Holmes Murphy is doing a phenomenal job for us certainly plays into that. One modification that we'll have in the contract, when you see this in a month, is we're going to do this year-to-year renewal instead of a three-year contract with the option to unilaterally renew up to two more times. That's a little bit different, and that's just so that we can continue to, I guess, work with Holmes Murphy to get outside the box on other ways that they can support the district with regard to our brokerage services.
Again, you'll see that in our April board meeting. Any questions of Dr. Vogelar before we move on?
Not hearing any. We will move to 5.04 Contracts and Purchases.
We do have a couple of items under 5.04, and wanted to turn it over to Mr. Anderson to walk us through those this evening.
You're muted, Steve.
Sorry about that. Yeah, just real quickly, these are a couple of emergency purchases, kind of following that normal routine where we give you the Friday update and just simply had to tackle issues that popped up on us. One was at Lewis and Clark, related to a boiler issue in a pump and some plumbing issues. And then also, we had a bit of a surprise in the new wing at Liberty North. Got some calls bright and early one morning and went up and had a bit of a flood on the second floor. And that was related to a cracked water coil in one of the new units up there. And so sorting through all that and taking care of that was a little bit of an issue. But we had North Point handle both of those issues kind of on the fly.
With the one at Liberty North, was there any water damage remediation that had to be done? Or was that handled internally?
We handled it all internally. It ended up being fairly minor, but we're, they're tracking all that, the expenditures, and how to kind of recoup some of those costs, either from, as part of the construction process. Will primarily be through the construction process.
All right, I think we're ready for a motion on these. Anyone?
Did Scott stop doing motions?
Yeah, all right. I move the board approve the emergency purchases made with the North Point boiler and combustion.
Second.
Any discussion or questions before we take a vote on the motion? Hearing none, we're ready for a vote.
Ajay? I'm sorry, you're muted again.
Yes.
Thank you. Scott?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim Marie? And I'm sorry, you're muted.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thought I am muted, sorry.
Andy?
Yes.
Machine Carries.
So that one motion covered both of those repairs. It was the same company, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. All right, then I think that concludes new business. We move on to upcoming meetings. You'll see a list there at this moment. That is what we have scheduled. Keep in mind that as emergencies arise, we may need to get together at other times or adjust the schedule on the fly, as we've had to do. Anyone have any questions on any of those on that list? If none, then I believe we are ready for a motion to adjourn to our closed session. We have some items to discuss enclosed.
I move the board adjourn to closed session, including any record or vote for the purpose of discussing legal privileged communications with district attorneys and personnel as provided by laws, by law, Section 610.021, Subsection 1, 3, and 13, RSMO.
Second.
Questions, discussion? Ready for a vote?
Ajay?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Machine Carries.
All right, so we need to close out this Zoom session and respond to the other invite?
Yes. So we'll close, take just a couple of minutes, and we'll open up in the new session.
Sounds good.